Hello, welcome to today's Public Works and Finance meeting. It is Monday, September 13th, and I am joined by Brandy Sullivan and Art Bettke. And as always, our first item is the approval of the minutes from August 23rd.
Good to go according to me.
I wasn't here, but I looked at them, and they look good.
Yep, they look good to me too.
Alright, so our next item is the dispersment report for August 2021 with Sarah Banks. Are you taking that Gary today?
Yes, I'll be taking that. And you might note I'm wearing a mask, we had an outbreak in the finance department. So we're just making sure that we're able to cover that. As you can see, for our dispersment report, we have a total of $3,212,328 for August. The major expenditures that we have are Girma Construction for the 7-6 sanitary replacement, in the amount of $138,855. J-7 contracting for the south lift station, Forest Main, second payment application, $222,589. Blackline Inc. for our slurry seal program, $208,85183. Wellens Farwell for the police facility construction, $258,975,000. And finally, the Girma Construction for Indian Hills water line improvements, pay application Other than that, our revenues are online. Things are looking good, just as we anticipated. I asked Sarah if there was anything she wanted to bring to committee's attention, and she indicated it all looked good going forward. So whatever you would like, we're asking for his approval of the dispersment report and permission to put the electronic signatures on.
I'm good with it.
Agreed.
Yep.
Alright, thank you Gary. That takes us to our third item, proposed neighborhood traffic calming policy with Bill Belknap.
Good afternoon.
Hi Bill.
Well, I will do this up here, it might work a little bit better. So provide a little bit of background, over the last couple of years, the city has received several requests for the installation of neighborhood traffic calming devices. And most often, this is a neighborhood that perceives they're having increased either volumes of traffic or increased speeds in their neighborhood that they are concerned about. We really, before we, historically in addressing these, we have not had a systematic way of assessing when it might be appropriate to install traffic calming devices. And so we identified the need to develop a policy to guide us in that effort. So the Transportation Commission spent several months working on the development of this policy for the council's consideration that'll run through this afternoon. So right off, the draft policy includes an objective, and the objective is that the policy is to... Can't do right here. Objective of the policy is to provide orderly and consistent process for the assessment and the need, effectiveness and impact of installing neighborhood traffic calming devices, based upon engineering analysis and staff's professional opinion. There are a number of principles identified. Those include the fact that traffic calming devices present costs related to both initial installation as well as ongoing maintenance, a potential reduced inefficiency of roadway maintenance operations. So if you consider things like, you know, speed humps or curb bulbs or other things, they do have both an initial upfront construction cost, and they also have ongoing reductions of efficiencies of the city's operations. The installation of traffic calming devices also may result in the diversion of traffic into adjacent areas, so we have to be careful in considering the impacts of the installation of these devices. The traffic calming devices should be reserved for the control of vehicular traffic when it is determined there's a unique circumstance or condition that warrants the installation of the device. Stop signs are generally not recommended as a means of traffic calming. There have been several studies that have indicated that actually speeds increase between stop signs as people try to make up for the lost time that they spent stopping at that stop sign. And generally, traffic calming devices, we're looking at these most often upon local residential streets. It shall not be installed upon streets designated as collectors or arterials unless they're deemed appropriate by the city engineer. And there may be unique situations, for example, think about the middle school there at D Street where it's a high student activity, a vulnerable population, the roadway is a minor, designated as a minor arterial, but we have installed traffic calming in that location just to improve student's safety. The evaluation need for the traffic calming devices will be based upon daily traffic volumes and speeds, volume pedestrian bicycle activity, restricted sight lines, accident records, unusual sight conditions, adjacent land uses, and roadway geometrics. Vehicle speeds and accident history will be used as the primary criteria, because we are looking at trying to address safety considerations, so accident history helps us identify that there is an issue in that location. And the functional street classification to be used for the purposes of this process will be the latest addition of the city's comprehensive plan for the street types and assessment process. The policy lays out a procedure, again, a written request must be, and this follows a very similar pattern to the city's stop sign request policy, that a written request must be submitted to the city, must have at least 25% of the owners of the dwelling units and/or businesses within two blocks of the proposed traffic calming device. And it's kind of important that we don't have just maybe one resident that perceives a concern instituting the installation of a speed hump or some of the type of traffic control device that would inconvenience potentially many more people. So we do want to make sure that this is something that the neighborhood really is seeking as a whole. The installation of traffic calming devices may also, may originate from the engineering division, so if we, as we go through our annual review of traffic accidents, we may identify a location, and we may institute the installation of a traffic calming devices based upon that information. Those traffic calming requests, we submit it to the engineering division upon the approved form, will then contact the requestor, confirm receipt of the request, answer any initial questions, gather information about what the concern is at that specific location, and if traffic calming, if a traffic calming device is considered to be potentially appropriate for that solution, then we'll move forward through the process. But that will be followed with a site visit to assess and document the area of concern, visually observe traffic volumes and speeds within the area. We'll deploy traffic volume and speed measuring devices to collect data for analysis of the situation at that location. We'll review the five-year accident history within the area to understand any potential safety issues or accidents we're seeing in the vicinity. And then we'll also solicit input from the streets department, the police department, fire department, and those input may be observations of their experiences with the area, again, accident history, enforcement activities, emergency vehicle access, or other information. If the city engineer determines the criteria of installation, which we'll cover here in a moment, are met, are not met, the request will be notified by the city's findings, and the applicant may appeal the decision of the city engineer to the city supervisor within 15 days, and such appeal shall be accompanied by the appropriate fee. And then the city supervisor's review shall be limited in scope and shall be intended to confirm that the city engineer's decision is consistent and supported by the policy and the data that was collected. The city supervisor may affirm the city engineer's decision or amend the decision to the city engineer for further consideration where it's determined the decision may be inconsistent with the policy or not supported by data. So the evaluation criteria include... Two or more of the following criteria must be met for the engineering division to approve the installation of neighborhood traffic calming devices unless otherwise justified by the city engineer. So traffic volumes is one criteria. So traffic calming devices may be warranted if the number of vehicles on a local residential street exceed 1,500 vehicles per day. That typically is a volume that's up at the upper range of a traditional local residential street, certainly not something that may be a collector or arterial that passes through a residential area. But for a local residential street, that'd be a volume where we may indicate that there is excessive cut-through traffic that does not originate or end within that neighborhood. Vehicle speeds, where the observed 85th percentile exceeds 10 miles per hour over the posted speed limit is another criteria. Criteria three is accident history, so if five or more reported traffic accidents occurred within a five-year period, which would likely have been avoided or minimized by the installation of a traffic calming device. And number four, the traffic calming device may be appropriate upon roadways with high bicycle use and/or designated bike routes, greenways, to reduce vehicle speeds and risk of injury accidents. And then criteria five, may be appropriate in the vicinity of facilities serving vulnerable populations such as schools, parks, pedestrian crossing locations where a high number of pedestrians are present, so that's, for example, the middle school would be that type of situation. The policy also includes a number of potential traffic calming devices that could be employed, and those devices will vary based upon what may be most effective for the situation. They also may be considered to be installation in kind of an increasing degree of cost to see what minimum level investment may help address the situation. So certainly additional speed limit signage, whether it's advisory or regulatory, could be posted in the area if it's not very well present. The next level might be dynamic speed signs that give feedback to the driver, the speed there, the operator vehicle, and the posted speed limit, so you're familiar with those. We might consider evaluation of on-street parking, and generally, you're looking at the allowance or expansion of on-street parking to narrow the roadway to effectively slow traffic and provide that friction on the edge of the roadway. Other treatments could include landscaping, street tree installation, again, anything that provides a visual narrowing of the roadway and makes it feel more narrow can help calm and slow vehicles. If none of those are appropriate, we could consider speed humps, again, those are elongated raised surfaces on the roadway, so not a speed bump, but a speed hump, and those can be effective at reducing speed. And then the others, which we have done in several locations, especially where we have high pedestrian and student populations, could be the roadway narrowings. Those can take several forms, from just the curb bulb extensions at the intersections, you can have what are called chokers, which may be mid-block narrowing of the roadway section, but again, something that provides that narrowing of the roadway width, so motors feel that they need to slow down. You can also, those can be implemented in conjunction with chicanes, again, where you'd maybe take a fairly straight road section and add a curvature to it. So typically, you'd have a landscape island on either side that are offset, that provide that curvature and deviate that vehicle's travel path. Where it's determined that the installation of a traffic calming device is warranted, then the city would develop a traffic calming plan for that area. That plan would identify the proposed traffic calming devices or measures that would be employed. It also would describe any proposed phasing of the installation of those devices, so it may start with regulatory signage or dynamic signage, and then move on to additional measures beyond that point, and each of those measures would be measured for their effectiveness at reducing speeds in the area. Those may be installed, again, as a phased manner, as I mentioned. The one thing that we do not have is unlimited funding for the installation of traffic control devices or traffic calming devices, so the installation of these would be dependent upon available funding within that program. We currently don't have a program, we don't have funding identified, but if the council were to move forward with a program of this nature, then we would probably in the capital fund allocate a certain amount of money every year to this program. But it's important to note that depending upon the significance of the installation, it may take several years before we can accumulate enough funding for the installation of a more extensive traffic calming effort. So with that, this was developed and reviewed, as I mentioned before, through the city's transportation commission, and the proposed policy is before you for review and consideration.
Thank you Bill. Does anyone have any questions?
I've got a couple of comments and a question. I do like the policies regards minimizing stop signs, because not only do you get the people trying to catch up to their speed in between them, but also the fact that it impacts the carbon footprint at Moscow too, because starting and stopping at stop signs uses up a lot more gas than just carrying on through. And also having all the metrics for cause for installation and what forms of traffic calming might be employed, really like having those listed out, those were quite good. And the funding part, well taken, definitely. And one question is, who's our city engineer now?
Scott Bontrager.
Hi Scott, thanks. So yeah, overall laid-out program that you brought forward to us.
Anything for you Brandy?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, so I think this is great to have a standard procedure like this, like we do with the stop signs, because it has come up many times, so this is excellent, I'm really glad. The Transportation Commission has been working on it. Couple of questions I have. There, would it be, is it going to be standardized at number three and four for the measures for how long the site visit or the traffic counts and speed counts? I mean, is that going to be standard?
Correct.
Okay, so it will be...
Probably do it for a 30-day time period.
Okay.
For the speed studies, correct.
Great, and then the, talked about one of the criteria being more than 1,500 vehicles passing through, like not, so starting and stopping outside of that neighborhood. Will they actually be watching as the cars come in and out?
No, it's just an indication on the residential street. I mean, typically, you know, if it's not a collector or a minor arterial, and it's just a local residential street that serves 100 homes, you would expect 1,000 trips per day on that roadway section, typically that trimmed, 10 trips per household. So if you're seeing in the magnitude of 1,500, you know, it may be indicative of excessive volumes on that roadway with cut-through traffic, and if that does also trip another criteria, whether it's speed or it's accident history, then that helps elevate that area for consideration for the installation of traffic calming. It's just that's kind of the 1,500 to 2,000 is kind of the top end of what you would see a local residential street carrying per day.
Okay, and then it was a little unclear when someone, you need to get 25% of the people on that street, of the residences or businesses, to trigger it. And does that trigger it, or then is it the engineering department that determines if this...
That triggers a, essentially a perfected request. An actual valid application has to contain those signatures. So that just triggers the process. So we won't act upon one request for, you know, the one neighbor in the neighborhood who thinks everybody's driving too fast and wants a speed hump. They'll have to gain the support of 25% of the owners within that area to advance to having the assessment completed.
Right, so once they have the 25%, the assessment will be completed. That's the plan on this.
Correct.
And would there be any kind of waiting period between requests if this was completed in one neighborhood, and then one year later, they say, okay, now we think we have a problem? I know last time you did the study, you said it was fine, because I assume there's some expense associated with...
Yeah, that's a good point. We haven't really considered it. It probably would be appropriate to say once every three years for the same location.
Mm-hmm.
I think would be probably appropriate. We don't see that dramatic change over one year or two, but maybe a three-year time period would be appropriate to specify.
Um, oh, and my last question, I had to do the budget too, so what happens now if there's really an emergent, very clear, like traffic calming is needing somewhere, and we don't have it in the budget?
So, I mean, it really hasn't occurred as of yet.
Okay.
So you'll get a report at the end of the meeting that's kind of a similar situation, and operations found available funding for a fairly low-cost interim measure. So we would probably look to see if there was actually a fairly significant emergency or crisis situation that we needed to address. There are some less permanent temporary measures that we put in the short term if we didn't have funding available to try to help address that situation. But at this point, what we'd be looking to moving forward, if we were to adopt this policy and start a program, is we'd allocate a certain amount of money from the Road Improvement Program into a traffic calming fund, in maybe 20,000 or 30,000, you know, fairly small amount to begin with, to have that available for potential requests.
Excuse me, if there was a request that rose to the top because it was something opened up, perhaps they opened up another street or something, the council could definitely reallocate funding from the capital fund to be able to address that. We have the same tools and we have...
Sure. Yeah, another point that I was appreciative of is the examination of whether traffic calming on one road is going to reroute traffic across somebody else's road, and I was glad to see that iterated as one of the considerations in the whole traffic calming purview.
We do support a well-connected grid system in the city so that we can have that traffic be diffused, have multiple routes to the destination, so we do need to be mindful about what reducing capacity or width in one area may have on an adjacent street. In some of the, especially the historic grid neighborhoods, you could be chasing it for quite some time.
One other question, so when people express concern about the potential for there being traffic problems as the city expands, but it's not there yet, the answer is when that time comes, then you would follow this process and it would gather the signatures and it would be evaluated, but until that time?
That would be a recommendation, correct, yes.
I had a couple of questions, well, actually mostly they were financial, and you answered them already, but I did have one, do we have a sense of what we want for an appropriate appeal fee?
Um, I don't, probably something fairly, fairly minimal. A lot of our appeal fees tend to be about $150, so it probably would be nothing that would exceed that number.
Great, and then I just had one other question, what about neighborhoods that are largely not owner-occupied? Would tenants have the ability to sign on, or does it have to be property owners?
And we could certainly change that to be owners and residents, because it could vary based upon wherever you are in the community, so we can make that modification.
I think that would be my only suggestion, but otherwise, I think it looks great, and I appreciate the work that went in.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, so item number four, AT&amp;T Amendment to Wireless Communication Facility Agreement with Gary Reeder.
Yeah, on the last item, you want that to come to the council regularly?
Yes please, yeah, thank you for asking.
Yes, what we have is an agreement, an amendment to the AT&amp;T agreement for the resident street water tank. As you can see, this is the fifth agreement on this tank. So what it is, is a proposal for a 10-by-16-foot additional lease that would generate $120 a month to put a generator on that tank space. The resident street tank, at this point, I don't believe is in use, is that correct? It is not, so we've not stored water in it, but however, all the cellular capabilities of the tank continues to generate revenue, and the request is in full compliance with our co-location policies. So it's one that, if administratively, we could have approved, and we would, but since it was a lease approved by the council, we thought we should bring that. Staff's recommendation is to approve.
Well, I don't have a problem with this. It seems to afford additional service to subscribers to AT&amp;T in the area. It fits in with the co-location ordinance that's been passed, and is essentially a continuation of previous lease agreements.
I have no concerns about it either.
Same.
Same agenda?
Sounds good. Alright, item number five, consideration of the Meadowbrook Second Edition Pedestrian Bridge with David Schott.
So this is a consideration of the Meadowbrook Second Edition Pedestrian Bridge. So the city received a proposal from Girma Construction Incorporated, who is the owner and contractor developing Meadowbrook Second Edition subdivision. The proposal includes two options for installation of a pedestrian bridge and a 10-foot pathway over Paradise Creek. The location of the proposed pedestrian bridge is south of Meadowbrook Second Edition and north of Meadow Street, just to orientate everybody here. So we got the Moscow School District Community Playfields here, Meadow Street along the eastern side that terminates in a cul-de-sac, the Meadowbrook Second Edition's up here, and so the proposed location would be here, over Paradise Creek. This is Meadowbrook Second Edition, the platte, so there's a retention pond area, this is Westview Drive, and so the pathway would come off Westview Drive adjacent to the retention pond, bridge, and then over into Carroll Brink Natural Park. So this is a close-up of how that would look. So we have an existing pathway that comes along here and then folds into Meadow Street. The proposal would be this bridge and a pathway up to Westview Drive. So again, the pedestrian bridge will connect to the existing pathway at Carroll Brink Natural Park, and the Westview Drive to the north within the Meadowbrook Second Edition. The proposal, based on preliminary design, includes two options for a bridge. One's a culvert-style bridge, which is the cheaper option at $89,056, or a span, a typical span bridge, which is $119,196. They both include a pathway. This is a base, the reason we've got two options right now is this is preliminary design, so it really depend on the hydrology of Paradise Creek if we move forward with this project if approved. So the fiscal impact, this is a 50/50 cost share with the city, so if approved, the city would be responsible for half of this, which would range from $44,528 to nearly $60,000. It's currently not part of the capital improvement plan, and not funded in the city's fiscal year '21 or '22 budgets. If approved, the funding would come from accumulations with capital projects, parks and recreations. Just some backing for this, the 2008 Paradise Path conceptual plan does have a connection here to the pathway system, it does provide some connectivity with all the subdivisions up on the hill, these are rolling hills, first through ninth additions, down into the Ball Field area, where you can connect into Heron's Hideout through the pathway system, through the fairgrounds, White Avenue, underpass to Paradise Path to the south. Here's some pictures of the site, so right now, in this one, you're looking north from Meadow Street, north, with the subdivision going in back here, Paradise Creek behind the sign here. Again, Paradise Creek, kind of the same view, just a close-up, and this is the existing pathway that turns into Meadow Drive, so the bridge would be located approximately through I did bring this to the Moscow Pathways Commission, and they considered unanimously recommended approval during their August 10th meeting. I brought this to the August 26th meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission, which they voted to recommend approval in a 3-2 vote, and staff is recommending this, pedestrian bridge over Paradise Creek with a 50/50 cost share with Girma Construction. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you David, yes, Art, go for it.
Yes, I've got questions for you. When wouldn't it be? I think pedestrian access is always a great idea, and it's always good to have, what's the span distance on this thing?
If that would be the committee's pleasure, I've got Scott Becker, who's done a little preliminary design here, I'm not sure on the span, but...
Yeah, because it seems like in that area, there's a good deal of marshy area around, and how far would the span actually have to extend to get out of the marsh, and would the project also include the approaches that lead up to the bridge?
Well, good afternoon, I'm Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington, and yes, we're, that's part of what we're looking at in this, and ultimately, it's the floodway, there's the flood plain, which is the overall area that gets flooded for the 100-year flood. The floodway is if you squish that together and it raises up one foot, that's the limits of your floodway. And so the bridge would span the floodway and then fill in from there, so, and we would have the capacity to handle all of the floodwaters in the future. So you're looking at about 35 feet.
Which isn't bad, so I assume also that, given the city's current activities and looking at reducing flooding along Paradise Creek, that this would not provide any issues with floodwater retention, with or without beavers?
That's correct, and we would also, you know, as this design progresses, we would be working with the city to mitigate any flood issues, but right now, it was, it's conceptual, and we've looked at a couple of options that we think are very viable, and that's about as far as it is right now.
Okay, is there a timeline when contemplation of actually working this is going to happen?
We were hoping... We were hoping to get it in this fall, but I think our window's starting to close a little tight, and so, you know, getting the permits with the Corps of Engineers. So ultimately, we would get the permits this winter, get everything approved, and be ready to go as soon as the water allows us to work in that area in the spring.
I think it's a good addition to being able to have pedestrian walkways throughout the city. I think it's a really good idea. What was the main reservations at Parks and Rec to generate a three-two vote?
Council, great question. Pretty much centered around the fifty-fifty cost share coming out of Parks and Recreation or Capital Improvement Fund. This bridge, although it'll serve connectivity to a lot of the rolling hill subdivisions, their thought was it's serving the subdivision, Meadow Brook, a lot. And so they were a little bit hesitant with the fifty-fifty, is what I had gathered from the commission, a benefit of Meadow Brook subdivision specifically.
And I wasn't at Parks, but if you look at the connectivity, it kind of keeps a lot of the foot traffic away from Mountain View and directly to the park and can kind of.
Certainly facilitates access to the park and the ballfield from the rolling hills people quite a lot. Does the ratio of shared costs still hold at fifty-fifty regardless of any inflationary construction costs that may occur?
I would say yes. So fifty-fifty, and we've got the range, but yeah, we've got a soft agreement with Germer Construction on fifty-fifty. If prices got out of hand, I think there would be some additional conversations.
So would there then be a cap put on it?
I think at this point, we're just looking for if committee and council likes the idea to pursue it further. I think once we get further in design, that will start dictating the numbers a little bit more for us. But right now, it's just a, hey, do we like the idea? Do we want to move forward out of kind of this conceptual preliminary design? Or, hey, this isn't a good idea.
Another timing question, as far as the actual development, I mean, is the intention that the houses will come first and then the bridge? So we.
Probably not necessarily. Some houses would be built before the bridge is constructed, but ultimately, we want to get the bridge in as quick as possible and get that taken care of. Germer would like to have it done. It does help sell houses, but it also, once they can get the equipment out of there, then they're done with that subdivision, they don't have to worry about it anymore. So it's, they really do, would like that, but sooner rather than later.
And then, I was at that Parks and Rec meeting too. So I don't recall any specific, you know, I know there was with those two, the concern about the impact on the Parks and Rec capital budget, like what, how that might affect other projects, but there wasn't anything specifically like if we partner, take that half from that capital budget, then Parks and Rec won't be able to do X, Y, or Z.
I think we should be able to absorb that pretty well. It's not a huge cost. Now, may I have some additional information on that?
Just a little bit of information. So the next project, actually, the only, I'm not going to sit here, the only parks project we had programmed for next year included our anticipated financial participation in the construction of Third Street along the edge of Moser Park. The developer has since reduced the scale of the subdivision, just down to ten lots, and so we won't see that expense next year. So we had three hundred and eighteen thousand budgeted for participation in that. We also had an ending fund balance of about two hundred and thirty-one thousand projected for the end of FY 2022. So we should have the capacity to absorb the sixty thousand, and it probably should not significantly impact any future projects that we identified so far.
Thanks.
Bill, is there, as a condition of the Meadow Brook subdivision, is there any requirement that the developer is under to install this bridge as a developer expense?
No, it was not discussed, so during the Meadow Brook, and actually, I think it was related to the vacation of the right-of-way. So the prior Meadow Brook had a vehicular bridge going across, so Meadow Street continued north and intersected with Westview Drive. And the developer found that that was cost prohibitive across the, I can't recall how many lots are in subdivision, twenty lots roughly. And so the city council did approve the replat of the subdivision to take Meadow Brook extension out and did vacate the right-of-way that extended across the creek to connect with Westview. And there was discussion at that time about having, developing a partnership with the developer or requiring them to financially participate in a portion of the pedestrian bridge construction at that time, but we could not condition a right-of-way vacation in that manner, so the council did not. And so the developer did not have any conditions of approval of the subdivision or the vacation of the right-of-way to participate in this pedestrian bridge.
Thanks for reminding me. Just wanted to point out to the committee that this is one of those situations where you have a developer that's offering to pay half the cost of an improvement that they're not required to put in. It benefits us to fifty percent of the project.
I feel generally supportive. I think my only concern is just not knowing the exact timeline. We've seen plenty of estimates that did not pan out, as I'm sure you're familiar with, and so I'm wondering if we could designate an amount potentially, but I know fifty-fifty is what we usually do. And so, yeah.
And it would have to be approved since it's a public improvement. The design and all of that needs to be approved by the engineering department, so we'll have review capabilities.
Great. Bridge prices are notorious for surprising everybody.
You remember that, do you?
You have to stay closer to home to get the right prices.
Did anyone have any other questions or comments?
I'm in favor of it, though, of pursuing the rest of the process anyway.
Great. And I think full agenda?
On which agenda?
Full.
We've got, I would remind the council or committee that we have a fairly large agenda on the twentieth as well. So if you want it on the regular agenda, we'll have to look at whether or not we can do that on the twentieth, or we'd have to move that back to October.
What do you guys think?
I'm good with it on consent. Seems we're just authorizing continuation of research into the fundamentals and the basics of this project.
How do you feel, Brandy? Do you agree?
And we will get another look at it if it goes forward in greater detail.
That's true, I think, and I mean, anyone that's not in this committee can pull it from the consent agenda if they wish, so.
All right. Consent it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that brings us to our last agenda item, item number six, Community Development Block Grant Bid Results with Alisa Anderson and Nate Sur.
I'm Nate Sur with the Engineering Division, and as Ann said, we're looking at the Community Development Block Grant bid results. So a little introduction, this project is one of those that, due to the capital project having things projected many years into the future, we were able to look at similar projects and combine things to go after a Community Development Block Grant. And so this is focused on restroom access in both Indian Hills and Mountain View Park. And in Mountain View Park, that involves installation of a concrete pathway that will connect that north parking lot to the restroom without having to travel over the grass playfields. And in Indian Hills Park, it includes the installation of a pre-cast concrete bathroom, concrete pad, and actually, there's also an ADA accessible parking spot with the Indian Hills Park development. We advertised for bids on August twenty-first, and we received one responsive proposal. Unfortunately, Quality Contractors was the sole bidder, and their bid came in at two hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-eight cents, which is over a hundred and eleven thousand dollars over our estimate and what we had budgeted for this project. And we'll talk a little bit about the bid tabulation, but I don't want to get, oh, too far into it. I can't see much of this, but essentially, I highlighted four items. The first item is mobilization. This is the cost to set up facilities, bring in the equal opportunity employment posters, things like that, bring all the equipment down. And we typically see this in the ten to fifteen percent range, which would put us in the twenty-four to thirty thousand dollar estimate. What we were bid for this was nearly a hundred thousand dollars, or approximately thirty-five percent of the contract price, and we believe that this, even with two sites, this is exceptionally high for what we see for mobilization. The three other items that are pointed out are mentioned not because of their dollar amount, but because of their potential impact on the project. See, it is, essentially, it refers to three rock installations, basically the base rock for the pathways, and then the gabion baskets to stabilize the creek. And they are priced approximately six to eight times higher than we usually see, and the potential problem that this creates is those are the items that are most likely to grow during the construction installation, and if that's happened, the cost overruns would escalate. So because of that, our recommendation is to reject the low bid, and Alisa and I met with Tony Tenney of the Idaho Department of Commerce on Friday, and he said that, you know, we're well within our window of time for this grant. You know, it's a two-year grant. We were trying to get out ahead of it so we could get another application done quickly, but he said either bidding, rebidding this fall, or bidding in the spring, both are acceptable to DOC. And are there any questions?
Any questions? Oh, yeah.
So Nate, when do you feel you would go back out to bid on this sometime in the winter?
We're actually trying to explore that right now. I'm reaching out to the local contractors and seeing what some of their project closed windows are and if there's going to be any openings. So far, I've had both spring and fall. I've had contractors say they were available both spring and fall, you know, different contractors. What I'm finding is that a lot of them are tied up in subdivisions right now.
August is not the best time.
Is there any benefit to separating these?
This is actually partially separated already, so the whole grant includes the remodel of the restroom as well. We don't believe so, but this mobilization number, generally when you aggregate things, you get a better unit price, but the mobilization number was unusually high this time, so, you know, unsure about that. Typically, no, we don't see cost savings if we break things up.
Yeah, for me, I think it's a good idea to go back and try to rebid, partly as evidenced by the fact we only got one bid in, which indicates things are really tight, and that mobilization cost made my jaw drop a little bit.
Mine as well.
So, yeah, it is quite a lot. But I think we can still get the thing done in a fairly timely fashion, just wait, try for a better deal, get more bids on the project and go with that. So I'd be in favor of dumping it now and coming back again.
Definitely in favor of rejecting this bid, which I guess is what our main decision here is, but not to push this, but I'm going to push it a little more. As far as separating them, I was wondering, not just for cost savings, but could there be some possibility that one of them might come in at a favorable amount and one project could proceed even if the other one comes in way too high again?
There's certainly that possibility if they're separated, and the other possibility is to treat them as an additional alternative, so we can accept either one, both, except one or the other or both.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Same agenda, ma'am?
Please. And that is our last item, but we do have at least one report, D and Mountain View Student Pedestrian Safety Improvement Pilot Project with Scott Bontrager.
Absolutely. Good afternoon.
Love to have you sit up. Welcome back.
You missed this.
I did.
So a report on the D and Mountain View Student Pedestrian Safety Improvement Pilot Project, a little background on it. So for the past few years, the school district has provided crossing guards to assist students crossing at the intersections adjacent to the middle school.
Scott, could you raise up your microphone?
Sorry about that. So this includes both F and Mountain View and D and Mountain View and other locations around schools, but the one mainly here is the D and Mountain View intersection. So the school district crossing guards have reported safety concerns with D and Mountain View intersection configuration and the lack of compliance with drivers complying to the crossing guards trying to get students across. The city recently received from the Moscow School District to evaluate D and Mountain View intersection for possible improvements to increase pedestrian safety. So the city is planning to implement a pilot project to test the elimination dedicated left-turn lanes to reduce the amount of conflict points in the intersection. This is mainly the amount of vehicles coming into the intersection. So just a little background again for this, this is on D Street, middle school there is on the left-hand side, Euler Field, and Egan U Center is over there on the right. So just looking down, this is the improvements that we had made on D Street around the middle school back in 2016, essentially kind of narrowing the area to help slow down vehicles, create better pedestrian crossings in the area. As you move closer to the intersections, you know, this is an older picture of the intersection, but it's still a good representation of the amount of vehicles and pedestrians come up to the intersection and what can be a lot of conflict at the same time to deal with. So we bat around at a few different ideas, trying to find an immediate cost-effective solution that we can test out as a pilot project. And what we had arrived at was the possibility of installing essentially tubular markers or, you know, large tall cylindrical traffic cones, more in a semi-permanent installation, which is the type that actually essentially glue down, so they'll stay in place. And this will eliminate the dedicated left-turn lanes and make it so that the four remaining lanes, you can still take left through or right, it'll just reduce it from, instead of eight vehicles coming to the intersection at the same time, down to four, and creating a little bit of a refuge too between the entering and exiting lanes through the intersection. This particular intersection too has been analyzed in the past, and based on its traffic analysis, this intersection itself is considered to have a level of Service A, which is one of the best type intersections you can have, meaning it has delay in peak hour typically less than ten seconds of delay, you know, maybe behind a few cars, except for the exceptions of the peak times of parents trying to get their students to school. So a rough idea of what something like this would look like as a part of the pilot project here is a similar type thing using the tubular markers around the area, and this is more of a semi-permanent example of something that could be looked in the future. So the pilot project was presented to the Transportation Commission on September ninth, and they are in support of the project. The plan is to have public outreach and press releases go out this week through different venues, and we plan to implement traffic control devices later this week/weekend. Sounds like Steve's crews would be able to get this done throughout the weekend, with the intent of having the intersection modifications in place for the start of the school week next week. We have ordered and have received all the devices so far. We've got a few more coming. One of the recommendations that came from Transportation Commission was to add some additional devices at the actual bike lanes themselves to help from people trying to peel off and take a free ride with a very limited amount of space that's still there, but we have measured and be tight, but it's possible, so help keep things delineated better.
See if you have any questions, Bill.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah.
Please.
First off, by way of the drivers who aren't doing a good job of obeying the crossing guards and things, is the solution of putting the school resource officer there in a cop car to start issuing tickets been tried?
But in the past, I believe so. This has been a couple of years. I think Aaron Bacon has some.
Please come on up.
Information for sure.
Oh, or yeah. Hi, I'm Erin Bacon.
Need to wait till you sit down, Erin. Sorry.
Hi, Scott. I'm Erin Bacon. I am the Safe Route School Program Coordinator for Moscow. Been working in this capacity for the last five years. And as of the first day of school, I am one of the D and Mountain View Crossing Guards. So every morning and every afternoon, I'm out there getting not only my two children, but everybody else's children across that intersection. So as far as answering Art's question, the issue with that is that the SRO has other duties in the morning. Sometimes he's picking up kids that are dealing with truancy issues or not attending school. So every morning and every afternoon, I'm out there getting not only my two children, but everybody else's children across that intersection. So as far as answering Art's question, the issue with that is that the SRO has other duties in the morning. Sometimes he's picking up kids that are dealing with truancy issues or not attending school, so he goes out and picks them up and brings them to school, or he's dealing with other emergencies. Moscow PD has always been really supportive of traffic safety. If I call them because there's an issue or a concern, they do come. But as far as having a presence out there permanently, I've been told repeatedly that's not possible. So we can revisit that and look into more resources for that, but I have gone down that avenue. So the first two days of school, the officer that came out parked in front of the tennis courts facing the middle school, and even though we had traffic backed up clear to Rolling Hills Drive, there was no citations issued. He never stepped out of his vehicle, and I'm not being critical of him. He was watching the middle school. That was his assigned task that morning. He was not watching the intersection.
Yeah, part of it, well, you see it at every four-way stop in Moscow, is people blissfully ignorant of how a four-way intersection is supposed to work with a yield to the person on your right if you get there at the same time and take your proper turn. It's a mess there and up at White Avenue, too, and every place else. But I wonder, too, about eliminating the left turn slots, because that's going to lengthen the radius that people are going to have to go through, prolonging the time that they are in the intersection, and probably pinching down the number of cars that can get through there at any time. And I suppose it's worth the experiment, just to see what happens and how far traffic might back up. But it would make the signal people having an easier job of that and eliminate some of the confusion among drivers on the road, "Oh, is it my turn? Is it not? Oh, dear." You know, the waffling goes on, but I think perhaps instead of thinking of this as a permanent installation, give it a trial run and see what happens.
Yeah, that's been considered, too. And in part of this, the pilot program's planned into last 90 days. We're going to gather some metrics on it where we see it right now, and have some folks go out there and gather data, see what's happening. And then after installation, go out and reanalyze it, too. And part of the process, too, will be providing additional education on possible other alternatives of ways to avoid the intersection. But we also will be applying for potential grants in the future for some additional improvements, not only to this particular spot, but throughout the corridor through one of the TAP grants, so.
I think it'd be interesting data to get and see just what happens, because Mountain View is a minor arterial. And you start putting too many constriction on it, especially with consideration of potential future development north on Mountain View, it could become a cavalcade of issues. And so I think a pilot program would be well-served here to provide us some hard data, yeah.
Please, Gary.
And that is one of the reasons that pilot programs going forward is to find out if it will work. The genesis of this intersection goes back to when it used to be an east and west stop, and Mountain View had the right of way. At the request of the school district and residents, we came through, put in the four-way stop. And as you can see, it hasn't solved all of the problems out there. So I think it's just a continuing, trying to figure this particular thing out. As far as police enforcement, as Erin indicated, the SRO has other duties that day as traffic police around the city as well. This is one intersection out of all of the intersections in the city. We don't have that many police on station all the time, so to dedicate somebody for just that intersection would be an impossibility.
Well, I just think it's just a temporary thing. It scares the bee jeepers out of people for a while, and then they obey nicely before backsliding.
Officer Rick Whitmore did come out on Friday of the first week of school, and then I called him out last Tuesday because the second crossing guard, he was delayed, and I couldn't manage the intersection by myself, so I called. So they will come if you call, if there's a problem or if there's an accident, they will come. But it happens very quickly. You're out there, traffic's flowing, you've crossed a couple of kids this way, a couple of kids that way, and then all of a sudden, everybody's there, there's traffic everywhere. They can't get into the middle school parking lot because it's backed up on D. I mean, and it just happens really quickly. And so when you call, it still takes them, you know, the typical three to four minutes to respond, and by then, there's potential that the problem has passed. And what I've seen out there that's very concerning is people, you know, they're queuing up, coming on Mountain View, they need to get into the turn lane, and they are more than willing to drive into oncoming traffic around traffic that's waiting to go straight or turn right. And then furthermore, traffics that's waiting to turn right or go straight, they're more than willing to drive into the bike lane, and that is very concerning. So, you know, do we tell the middle school kids not to ride in the facility that's been installed? I mean, I don't know what the answer is. I'm just saying it's very concerning, and I don't know if it's a cultural shift or what it is, but people don't want to wait. And I don't know what the solution is for the cars or the traffic, but I do think that this is a good solution for the pedestrians and the cyclists. So that would be my big argument for that.
Yeah, I can't imagine, just thinking about eight vehicles there during that time where it's all backed up, that's a lot to keep track of as an adult that's a crossing guard, not to mention the kids and bikes and walking that are doing their own thing. So, yeah, thank you for being out there all this time, but I think that sounds like a good way to start, and with a pilot thing. One thing I do kind of wonder about the immediate goal is to make that intersection safer. As we have more traffic coming from all directions, you know, the traffic being backed up during those high-period times, I don't know what that's going to look like in the future, but I think it's certainly going to be an issue that also has to be somehow addressed.
Well, what I would say is that you don't have to drive your children to school, and you definitely don't have to drive them directly to the property.
Exactly right.
Right. You don't have to have line of sight to drop your kid off at school. There's lots of options in our community that could be utilized, and they're not. That's a parent decision. So if this forces a different decision and for people to change their behavior, I don't think that that's necessarily a bad thing. But I do have some concerns about the process. And when this goes live, and this is more of a question on September 20th, I hope that we'll have more people out there, because I'm anticipating, I'm anticipating, I don't know what I'm anticipating.
Yeah, I like what you were saying, too, Scott, about some efforts to let people know other ways that they can go or places to drop off. I was exactly thinking what you said. If there could be a safe place where they could pull their car, and that's a block or two away, and drop their kids off there, I don't know.
Sorry, Scott. I really do think you're the best. So last year during COVID, I worked out a plan with McDonald Elementary about optional drop-off locations to increase social distancing for kids coming to and from school. That was really successful. So instead of having around 140 cars coming in and out of McDonald parking lot, we reduced it down to 17 because parents were using different places. So it can be done. It's repeated messaging, it's clear messaging, it's maps, it's signs, and then it's encouragement and follow-up. So, you know, I can do what I can with my resources, and, you know, I look to Scott and to Bill for additional resources to how to keep longevity with parents doing it. It can be done, but it's, you know, it takes a long time.
Well, I think when they realize, it's less stressful on them as well to stop a block or two short of the actual school.
Yeah, and the number one option is just have your kids walk or bike.
So is there any thought from you guys about making the modifications a more temporary thing? Because we're talking essentially two times a day that maybe have a duration of half hour or 45 minutes each. And then the weekends and the rest of the time during the day, there's not really that much of a need for traffic modification. So is there, in your engineering world or traffic control world, any way to facilitate a hybrid model, I guess, where the traffic is narrowed down and easier to deal with during school crossing times that can go away the rest of the time?
You want to talk about it?
Well, that's a lot of traffic controls we deployed for a very short duration of time. So it could be done, however the cost would be. We're looking for a more, you know, a 90-day pilot design like this that'll allow it to be safe all the time.
Well, maybe after we gather the data, you can have a more robust discussion about alternatives.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I also kind of wonder, and thinking about it, those times of the day where it's not that congested, maybe there isn't really the need for the left turn lane then for a totally different reason, so.
And we have lots of ideas, too, for future permanent solutions. It's just going to require a lot more money, always.
I just want to touch on two items related to the conversation ongoing. I think, like Scott mentioned, once you get off the peak hour, there is no need for turn lanes at the intersection. The volume you see throughout the course of the day, and it's really concentrated during the AM peak. It's really not so bad during the PM as students have sports and other events and kind of disperse a little bit more spread-out time period. It's that AM 10, 15-minute time period, right around that 8 o'clock hour, that really is the concentration. Beyond that, there's no need for capacity in the intersection of the turn lanes. We probably put more vehicles through Sixth than in Blaine through the course of the day, and there's no turn lanes at that intersection. Really, we hope reducing confusion and question about who has the right of way will actually increase capacity rather than people staring at each other and not sure whose turn is it to go. The school district has committed to message this out with us this week and to let parents know why this is occurring, and to also reinforce and encourage them to drop off campus someplace. There are multiple good locations, and we hope to leverage the work Erin's done in the past and have the district push that information back out again as well. And then the Transportation Commission discussed the possibility of making this intersection, both this intersection, F Street, and Mountain View to the north, to add bike lanes and sidewalks on the west side, add sidewalks on F Street between Mountain View and Cleveland as a transportation alternatives grant application, which is due at the end of this year. So we're going to be working towards that effort, and then that would help us do more permanent treatments at this intersection, which would likely be curb bulbs, narrowing the roadway, narrowing the pedestrian crossing, and removing those lanes in perpetuity to try to improve pedestrian safety in that location.
In the short term, I also like Erin's idea about convince parents that there's alternative places to drop your kid off. I really like that a lot.
Yeah, when you just mentioned the Cleveland and Mountain View, I seem to recall, I think it was at least a couple of years ago now, someone with concerns about even just that crosswalk right there, that that's like the backside of the Egan.
The administration building there.
Oh.
At F Street. It's just north of the-
Sorry, I'm talking about more south. Sorry, this conversation is going in all kinds of directions, but just south, the other side of Egan, that end of Cleveland, there's a crosswalk right there.
At B Street?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, and actually, that's where I dropped my middle schooler off on the way, is on B Street, and let them walk the path across the field. And there's a number of parents that do that. And then we really have the entire pedestrian route. And I think that was also a Safe Routes grant application that we installed sidewalks on Cleveland. I think it's on the north side of Cleveland that provided the pedestrian route from the sidewalk that crosses Sixth Street near Shorts, you know, travel, then goes along Cleveland, on along the east side of Lena, and then gets you essentially to Euler Field and across to the middle school.
Perfect. Thank you all so much for the update. Are there any other staff reports, Gary?
The only report I want to make, as I indicated, we did receive a little bit of a COVID wake-up call down in the Finance Department. We issued a press release today that the Finance Department will be closed for this week as we're determining where that's going. We hope we won't have to go very much further, and considering talking to staff about donning masks again in order to prevent any spreads. So we'll deal with that as staff, and we'll keep the council informed.
Great. Thank you so much. I think that's it for us. All right, we are adjourned.